Greetings everyone, I'm John Schulte, pastor of education and discipleship at RB Community Church. And we're continuing our all church Bible study on 1 Timothy. And that means everyone, anyone, whatever age, whatever can be involved in this series of studies on 1 Timothy. I think everyone can get something out of that. So if you're enjoying it, you can grab your Bible and maybe a pencil or a pen or whatever for marking it, so that you can do your study right there, or take some notes along with you, whatever you might need. So we're well into this, good stuff. It's meaty, it's heavy, and today it's not going to be any different. This is our fourth session, so if you're just joining us today, then I just advise you to go back to the website and look at the church YouTube channel and see some of the Bible studies that are already there. Our first three Bible studies that are already there, you can watch those and catch up. And you'll be right in pace with us here in this fourth session. So I'm not going to go too much into the background on the book of Timothy and on Timothy himself and so forth, because we've really covered a lot of that. But I do want to say that last week Paul began to point out to the church some of the issues that the church was facing. And the number one thing he starts out with is worship. And so the first problem he says, hey, we got to clean this up, is in worship. He's talking to Timothy and of course through Timothy to certain people within that church. And I think that's pretty important. You know, when I think about it, when there are churches who have kind of lost their vitality, maybe are not as healthy as they should be, as was in Ephesus, the issue in Ephesus, then where do you begin? Well, first of all, the first thing you might look at is worship. And Paul certainly took that on. Today, we're going to see the second thing that Paul has issues with in the church and that needs to be kind of tightened up and cleaned up, and that is in leadership. So we're going to be looking through the third chapter of 1 Timothy, and that's all about leadership, so that's the key. So first he talks about worship, how important that is. And then he says, alright, now we need to really clean up and tighten up this leadership that is in the church of Ephesus. Such a great church, a church that he loves, you know, he's stern with them, kind of forceful, direct, but not because he's mad or angry, but because he loves the church and he wants the church to have vitality, he wants the church to be healthy, just like he wants our church to be that way. You know, the Lord wants that for us as well. And we can learn a lot of things from what was happening in Ephesus. So yeah, he's kind of pointed out the first issues, issues in worship. We went over that last session. And now he's looking at chapter three and going right to another important issue, which is the leadership of the church. So let's dig in. And I'll tell you, you know, just preparing for this, studying for getting ready to teach on this chapter, I was humbled by it and it was convicting. And you know, we'll get into more of this as we go along, but just saying, wow, Lord, you know, help me to be one of the best leaders I can be in the church. You know, take those things away from me that would be in the way from doing that. You know, it's not about me, it's about your leadership and it's about you. And so this is a tough passage of Scripture, but it's important and we need it. We need to be feasting on this, we need to be really thinking about it. So let's look at the first verse, chapter three, 1 Timothy 3 verse 1. Oh, and I changed over my translation. I was using the NIV in the first three sessions because that was my wife Kimberly, that was her Bible. My Bible was in the office, church office. I'm in my office here in my consulting hat. But anyway, and but just a couple of days ago, I was able to get on campus for a quick minute and grab my study Bible, my Bible that I use, and that's the new American Standard Version. I just feel a little bit more comfortable teaching out of that Bible translation. So I'm switching over that. So that's why there might be some differences if you, you know, if you got in on a new international version when the Scripture comes up. But anyway, all good, all good, no matter what translation you have, the Spirit's going to speak to you. And you may have, you know, see something interesting that sparks your interest or adds to the study. And don't forget, you can send that to me. A lot of you have, you know, just saying, hey, I've been on the study, I haven't followed it through. I know I was talking to a few other folks who said, you know, even though it's only a 30-minute study, we kind of break it up and go through it through the whole week. So lots of different ways of doing it. If you have any questions or insider ideas, don't hesitate to send me a note, email, or give me a call or whatever. I'd love to talk with you about it, it's been a lot of fun to be going through. Alright, so let's start in chapter three. And he says, verse 1, "It is a trustworthy statement, if any man aspires to the office of overseer, it is a fine work he desires to do." Let's look at that, there's three things I want to look at here. Two of them are the word aspires and desires. But first, before we get to that, I want to look at the idea of overseer. And some of your translations may translate that as pastor, or elder, or bishop. And they all are the same. Throughout Scripture, we see that those offices are all the same. It can be interchangeable, you could say overseer, or you could say elder, pastor, or even bishop. And so that's the important thing. He's writing this, he says, hey, now in chapter three, we're going to talk about the leadership. There's some issues in leadership. And he takes the primary leadership of the church, called overseer, which is like our elder today, and also the pastors. So in the Presbyterian form of government in our system, we have both elders and ruling elders, and pastors are part of that ruling elders. And so he's speaking to pastors and elders. And they are the leadership, the top leadership of a church. And so he has some things he's going to say to them. But first, he says, "If any, you know, any man, anyone aspires to the office of overseer, elder, pastor, it is a fine work he desires to do." So first aspires is kind of a, kind of an outward thing. You know, hey, I think I want to be an elder, or I think I want to be a pastor, whatever the case might be. And, or somebody may even say to you, remember, it's an outside force. Somebody may say to you, wow, you should be an elder, or why don't you consider being an elder? Or maybe even, you know, I think that you should be a pastor, you have some gifts there that... And I've said that to others that have come across, even in our church. There are people who I believe really have the gifts to be a pastor, and I encourage them to pursue that. And then he says desire, I underline both aspire and desires, as well as overseer of course, but desires, and that's the internal, that has a context of passion, you know, real passion for, a real sense that this is what I want to do, you know? And so he said, there's nothing wrong with that. Matter of fact, you should have that. If you don't feel this inner passion and even the outward, you know, context of people saying, hey, you should be an elder, or things like that, then maybe, you know, you shouldn't consider the office of elder, or pastor. And what we're really talking about here between those two words of aspire and desire, we say that's a call, a call with a capital C, that's God calling you. You hear that call by outward sign, where people, you know, confirm that they feel like you could be an elder or a pastor. And then there's that inward calling, a feeling, that sense that God is asking you to serve in that way. And so you got to have both of those. If you don't have both of them, then probably shouldn't be an elder. But Paul says that's a good thing to have, but first of all, you got to have that calling. So make sure you've got the calling. Starts right off on the bat, don't serve if you're not called to serve. You know, but if you feel that, then good, then you need to serve. And if you're serving, then goes on in verse 2, "An overseer," it's again elder, pastor, bishop, you know, elder or pastor, "then must be above reproach." So you got to have that calling, and if you got your calling, okay, then you got to be above reproach. And the sense of that in the Greek is the idea, and I underline that too, above reproach is really the idea of not being held prisoner, or not being held in a jail for some criminal activity, you know? Nothing could be brought up against you. In other words, nothing should be, could confine you or hold you back because of something that was done in your past or in your life now, in the present, that somebody could use against you. But the idea there is not be able to be held in a criminal sense, that there's no valid accusation that could be brought up against you. So that's important. And obviously, the church in Ephesus had a problem with that. There were people who were not above reproach, who were in positions of leadership. And of course, we know that, because that's why the church in Ephesus was in trouble and needed Paul, and Paul sent Timothy and all the things that we've talked about over the last few sessions together. So you got to be above reproach. And then he goes into all of these other, you know, attributes that you should have. The husband of one wife, temperate, prudent, respectable, hospitable. You need to be able to open up your home to people, or just accept and be open to having people come to you. You know, there's this real sense of that. And then he also says in verse 2 there, "able to teach." Now I underline that, because the context of that word teach there, which we'll see even added to it, is a primary important piece to being an elder, teaching. And then what goes along with it, and we'll see later as we move through the book, he also adds exhortation. So it's really teaching and preaching are a part of being an elder. Now you might say, well, you know, I'm an elder, or I'm called to be an elder, but I haven't taught anything, or I'm not preaching and so forth. And that's okay. The point being that there are elders who do teach and preach, and of course, that's the pastors, right? And we have three pastors in our church, Pastor Brian, myself, Pastor Mofeed. And we do preaching and teaching. I'm teaching right now, right? But as an elder, you can preach and teach, or you are also responsible for that preaching and teaching. In other words, to make sure that the preaching and teaching is orthodox, is biblical, is what we, you know, what the Bible is all about, and not something else. We don't preach in some other, on something else. We preach on God's Word, that's the important thing. And the elders are responsible to make sure that these are theologically correct teachings, that the preaching is theologically correct, and that it's found in God's Word. So those elders that do preach and teach, you know, that's an important piece, certainly an important piece for pastors. But then the other elders are guarding that to make sure that it is what it is. And then he continues on in chapter 2, well, the whole chapter there. "And overseer then must be above reproach, husband of one wife, temperate," again, which we're going to get into more, he builds on that, "prudent, respectable, hospitable, and able to teach." And then he goes on in verse 3, "not addicted to wine," that's important. We don't want somebody who's having trouble with alcohol, that might cloud their thinking and understanding and their reputation. Or, my translation says, "pugnacious." I thought that was kind of an interesting word. What does that mean? Why did they choose that word? I'm not sure what your translation might have, but here we have, "or pugnacious," I underline that. And it means in the Greek, literally, "not a giver of blows." Well, meaning, you know, not somebody who wants to fight, not somebody who reacts in anger. You know, your first reaction is not to be yelling at somebody else, that's not how we need to be. And of course, he adds on to that, "but gentle and peaceable." So those are the ways that you need to act as an elder. You're going to see some situations you're going to face, and I know our elders certainly know that, and any elder in any church who takes their position seriously, and I know our elders certainly do, you know, is going to realize, this is challenging, and sometimes we face challenging things, and it's easy to get upset or angry, but we cannot respond that way. Now, that doesn't mean that we're going to accept everything, doesn't mean we put our head in the sand and pretend it's not going on. If there's an issue in the church that isn't biblical, sound, theological, then the elders are responsible for confronting that, but not in anger. Just like Paul is confronting the issues here in the Ephesus church, he didn't do it in anger. He wasn't mad, he was doing it firmly, but in love. And so there is this sense of firmness, love, but firmness in these words. Gentle, peaceful, but not one that lets disunity happen. Not something that lets us, as you know, what was happening in the church of Ephesus, controversies continued to brew and go on. No, we need to meet those in a firm but loving way, guiding people back to the Scripture, guiding people back to what is theologically correct and what is expected in the church. I remember when I was growing up, my home church, Haven Reform Church, Haven Ministries, I think they call it now, large church. But when I was there, and that's where I was ordained and so forth, and that was in Kalamazoo, Parchment, Michigan, Parchment, a little town outside of Kalamazoo. We had a pastor there, Cecil Martens. He pastored there well over 20 years. So he was there as my pastor as long as I was there, and always was a mentor to me. And this is one of the things that I really appreciated. And I try to make that a part of my ministry, and I don't know if I do it that well, but is that sense of love and care for people, but yet also a firmness in Scripture. Not falling away from Scripture, not letting people get away with things, but to lovingly confront, to hold people responsible and accountable, so that they might get back into the Word and be who they can be in Christ Jesus. That's the key. And what a skill and gift that is, and I'm not sure I do that very well, but I know he did, and I always hold that up. And so my prayer, every day, walking into church, and I know some of you and going into the office and working, and some folks I've talked about, so you've heard me say this before, is this, my prayer is this, "Lord, you know, take me away out of the equation, you know? Get me out of the way, so you can do your ministry." And that's a prayer that we, all leadership I think, needs to have. And we have, you know, a church, one of our greatest gifts in our church, at RB Community Church, is leadership, by the way. We have a lot of leadership, both men and women. And it's very strong, very powerful, and I think it's very exciting. And that should be all of our prayer, you know, just to, hey, to lead means I have to be, you know, get out of my own way, I don't want to trip over myself. I just want to be open, an open vessel for the power of the Lord Jesus, the power of the Holy Spirit to work through me in leadership. And that, I think, is one of our strengths in our church. And you know, we have someone in our church that you know well, that wrote a book on leadership, right? And so I think that's very important, and God has gifted us in that degree. But you know, having that strong gift of leadership also means that we have a pretty high responsibility. And it's kind of awe-inspiring, it's humbling, as I mentioned in the beginning, to be thinking about these things. But we need to be talking about that and look at, just like the church in Ephesus had to look at their primary leadership in their elders. And then he goes on in verse 3, "free from the love of money," that's important. We can't be caught up in those kinds of things, in material gain, or just thinking about that as a primary task. We have to be, you know, basically, we have to be good stewards. We have to understand stewardship. We have to understand that it's not ours. Leadership's not ours, but all that we have is not ours. It all belongs to the Lord Jesus, and we're just a steward of it. We're just managing His resources, both as a church. And then Paul brings it right into the personal matter, right in verse 4. He says, yeah, you have to be a good steward, but that good stewardship isn't just with leading the church as an elder or pastor, but also in your own home. And so in verse 4, and this is where I, you know, sometimes say, "Lord, wow, you know, help me out here, because I don't always feel like I'm doing this the best." "He must be one who manages his own household well, keeping his children under control with all dignity." That means not yelling at your kids and forcing and fighting and so forth, but in dignity and love and care, but firmness, that same firmness that you would lead, in that your same way you're leading in the church, to also lead in your family. And so that's, you know, I wrote that down as a prayer concern in my own way. "Lord, continue to develop me, continue to make me pliable as your disciple, so that I might lead my family well, just like I want to lead the church well." And that can be all our prayer. And he gives the reason why in verse 5, he says, "But if a man does not know how to manage his own household, how will he take care of the church of God?" You know, so if, you know, and there are times where, you know, if things are not going well in your family life, then maybe it's not a time to lead. Maybe it's time to step down, no, no problems. But you simply, you know, got to get things together, and then God will call you back into your position of leadership, whatever the case might be there. But there are times where we have to consider that. We just have to say, okay, I think, you know, maybe this is not my time to lead. I just have to wait and get some things adjusted and corrected, and then I can be moved back into leadership. So something to be thinking about as we go through leadership. And then in verse 6, he says, now, not, one of the reasons for all this, because first of all, we want to make sure that, and he'll talk about this later in the chapter, that other people, not only our church parishioners, you know, that we're leading, congregation that we're leading, but also outside the congregation and the greater community looks at us and, you know, can't hold us in reproach, you know? Can't hold us for those things, because they can see that we're leading our family just like we would lead the church. And so he says in 6, in particular, "and not a new convert," in particular, "can't be a new convert to the faith." You have to be spiritually mature. Now I know some churches have taken this a little bit out of context, because it kind of comes into less spiritual maturity and more kind of talking about chronological age, you know? So I mean, all the elders have to have what we call cotton tops, right? They have to be gray and old, and you know, and maybe the deacons would be the training ground, and then you can come and be an elder, and you have to be able to... Paul's not talking about age here chronologically. He's talking about spiritual maturity. And so if you just became a Christian, you're not spiritually mature enough to take on this leadership role. And so certainly don't, you know, place your hands on, and we're going to see later, Paul says, do not place your hand on too early, too fast, too suddenly. And placing your hand means ordaining, blessing, you know? Because remember, in the office of elder and pastor, we ordain people into those positions. So they have to be spiritually mature. But you could be spiritually mature and be a young man or woman. You could be younger, no problem, you know, 20s, 30s, whatever the case might be. And we certainly know that's the case, because Timothy is a young man. And when you get to chapter, when we get to chapter four, Paul's going to just take a brief pause a minute from pointing out some areas in the church that need to be fixed and worked on, some problem areas. But he then directs that chapter, his conversation, to Timothy directly to support and encourage him, even that he's young. We know that Timothy was spiritually mature, and that's the key. Leadership in the church, elder or pastor, have to be spiritually mature, or there's going to be problems, and there's no doubt about it. So you know, if you, and we work on that at RB Community Church, we really do. We have a kind of a vetting process, not to be mean to people, not to make people feel bad, but to be responsible to Scripture, right? The Scripture tells us, hey, you know, don't put in somebody who's not spiritually there and ready to lead. Help them along, you know? And so hopefully, you take College of the Bible classes, and you get involved in different ministries, and show, and learn, and discover, and develop your spiritual gifts, you know? All that's a part of spiritual maturity. And as you move along through that process, if God is calling you, if you have that desire and that aspire to that, you can then become an elder. And so the important thing though, is you have to be spiritually mature. And apparently, that was an issue again in Ephesus. They had some people who were not spiritually mature in their faith, and that's why they had the problems that they did. When you get churches that have leadership that's not spiritually mature, it's a church in trouble, there's no doubt about it. And so the vitality and health of your church, of our church, of the church in Ephesus is so dependent upon making sure that we have spiritually mature people in leadership. Alright, then, so, you know, and he says, so in verse 6, "and not, and not a new convert," I underline that, "so that he will not become conceited and fall into the condemnation incurred by the devil, or the ensnarement, the entrapment of the devil." You know, that's the whole thing. The devil can take advantage of people who are spiritually immature much better than he can against those who are spiritually mature. And then verse 7, "and he must have a good reputation with those outside the church, so that he will not fall into reproach and the snare of the devil." And certainly, that's so important, particularly in our time, in our age. It was just as important in Ephesus at the time that Paul wrote this, around 60 AD. But in our day-to-day, how important that is. And really, that's one area that the church, capital C, the church around the world, but the church particularly in the United States, has really taken a black eye on, right? There's been some activities in different churches that have certainly brought reproach from outside the church, and ensnared those churches with the devil. I mean, people don't want to have any part of the church because of things that churches have done, or people within the church have done. So we have to be so careful about that. That's what Paul is telling, this is so important to correct and make sure we have this in balance, because what's in the balance are the people who are out there who need to hear the gospel. And they won't be able to hear the gospel if they don't believe that people within the church are in the truth and living a life of truth. You know, that's the key. Alright, so that's, he ends with the deacon, or with the elders, and he goes on to the qualifications for deacons, pretty much the same. Matter of fact, that teaching point that he puts in with the elders is really one of the only differences between elders and deacons in terms of qualifications. I mean, there's different work that they do, and we're going to talk about that in a minute. But really, that's one of the big differences. The qualifications are pretty much the same. So in verse 8, he starts out with saying, "deacons," that means those who serve, that's the whole idea behind that word. Deacon just simply means one who serves. So they're the ones who serve. Likewise, must be men of dignity, not double-tongued, and I underline that, not double-tongued, meaning, you know, you can't say one thing one place and then say something somewhere else. You know, you have to keep that together, be consistent in the message. Or addicted to much wine, again, we have to have somebody who's clear-headed and not caught up in all those worldly things. Or fond of sword gain, how important that is. How important that is, right? He writes in that, I underline that because, again, here it is. You need to be a good steward of what God has given you to manage, both in, in your home, but also in the work of the church. And it's the deacons. We even see this in the early church, who take care of the finances. And they take care of the finances so they can also take care of people who are in need, both materially and spiritually, but, you know, those who need help. And so to do, be able to do that, we need people who can manage and be good stewards of what God has given us and blessed our church with. And I'm so thankful that we have deacons like that who really care for people who are sick, you know, who people have financial concerns and, and, you know, all those issues, not only within our community, you know, faith, our church, but also within the community that our church influences. And so it's exciting to be a part of that. Then, and verse nine, he goes on. But holding to the mystery of the faith. All right, I underline that. But let's just keep that in the back of our minds because he's going to finish up talking about that. So I'm going to kind of pass over for now, but I'll get back to that. He says to hold on to that, whatever that mystery of the faith is. He wants us as deacons to, to hold on to that. And we'll figure that out in just a minute. So we're going to keep moving here with a clear conscience. Verse 10. These men must also first be tested, then let them serve as deacons if they are beyond reproach. So just like an elders, we're not going to ordain and place somebody who's spiritually immature in the office of elder or pastor, for that matter. We can't be doing that kind of thing. The same here. We need to make sure that the people that get placed in deacons or decanesses, and he adds that in in verse 11. Women must likewise be dignified, not malicious gossips, but temperate. You know, again, he says temperate. Faithful in all things. So women likewise, the decanesses, have to also have that. But notice back in verse 10, he says, these men must also first be tested. And it's interesting because that's a, a present tense, tested, meaning that it's continually. You always are paying attention. You're always evaluating. You're always keeping track of. This is part of the good stewardship of elders. And that's why we have a good system, even at RB Community Church, and every church should have it, of managing the finances. We never have one person, you know, take the collection and count it. There's always another person present, you know? There's a system that we go through with making sure that everything is accounted for and, and proper. We have a financial person in our church who gives financial reports. We do auditing. All of those things are important because we want to be good stewards with what God has given us. And we want to be above reproach. So we're always evaluating how we do things and how it's done. All right, and then moving on to, to verse 12. Deacons must be husbands of only one wife and good managers of their children, just like the elders. Same thing there. And their own households. Okay, so all that we talked about there, go here. And then he finishes in verse 13 with the reason, of course, for those who have served well as deacons, and I'm sure we can include the elders and pastors in that, obtained for themselves. And I underline obtained. What are we going to obtain? What are we gaining from this? Okay, doing all these things we just talked about, all these things that Paul talked about. Okay, what are we gaining? A high standing, all right, respect. People respect those offices. Those offices have respect. There's a certain respect for the office of pastor. There's a certain respect for the office of elder. There's a, a certain respect for those in the office of deacon that we hold high, above anything else in the church as leadership. So they're, they've gained this respect by doing all these things that we've, we've talked about. And great confidence, not in them, all right? Because he goes on, in the faith that is in Christ Jesus. So the idea is, we hold these people in respect because they show us in the way that they live, this, live in Christ. So our faith is not in their confidence, but in the confidence that is in the Lord Jesus. They lead us to where we find true confidence in Jesus Christ. And we know, when we started out this study, right in the first chapter, Paul wrote, hey, these guys are, are, are teaching the wrong thing as, and they're confident in themselves. They were teaching, you know, stuff that they had come up with. They were living in a way for their own, you know, lifestyle and whatever they wanted to do. Remember, they were teaching the law in a different format. And Paul says, no, it's, it's not about that. It's about having respect for the office, not only by the people respecting, but the people in the office respecting the office of elder, deacon, and pastor in such a way that it brings to the true, where we need to really put our confidence in that is the confidence of Jesus Christ. And then he finally, he, he finishes the chapter. I know we're way past the time already. There's just so much stuff here. I, I can't get it all in, in a short amount of time. I try, but it just doesn't work. But, you know, he finishes up the chapter. My, and my Bible has a little title on it, on the rubric, The Great Mystery. Remember, we went back and, and verse nine there. He says, but holding to this mystery of the faith. We're supposed to hold on to this mystery. Well, what is that? Well, now he's going to tell what the great mystery is. Verse 14. I'm writing, this is what we're going to hold on to. I'm writing these things to you, hoping to come to you before long. He wants to come to see Timothy and see the church in person. He loves Timothy as a brother, as a son, really. And of course, he loves the church. He loves Ephesus. He sees the potential and the possibility. And he wants to come there. But in case I'm delayed, he goes on in 15, and he was delayed. I write so that you will know how one ought to conduct himself in the household of God, you know? Let's get this straightened out. Let's conduct ourselves the way we're supposed to conduct ourselves. And isn't this a wonderful title for the church? The Household of God? This is the household of God, which is the church. All right? And then he goes on, of the living God. The living God in, in the community. You want to see the living God in the community? Go to the church. RB Community Church is the living, is the place where people come to see the living God in the community. That's where the living God in the community is. How powerful, how important. And the same thing for Ephesus, that was sitting in a, in a strategic place, a strategic trading route in the Roman Empire. You know, it had great possibilities. And so that's what we have to, that's how we think about it. It's not a club. It's not a group to belong to. It's just not something I do. Matter of fact, everything else I do, my job, my, you know, career, my, everything else I'm involved in is only, only a part of, an extension of this household of God, this church of the living God. Because that's what, in the end, really counts. And he says, and this is really powerful, the pillar and support of truth. This church, household of God, this church of the living God is a pillar and support of the truth. Underline that. Pillar and support of the truth. Man, we're living in a very relative age. We're living in an age where people come up with their own truth all the time. And they say, it's fine, I've got my truth, you've got your truth. Nobody knows really what the truth is. The truth is only what I ordain it to be or call it to be. But in reality, there is only one truth, and that is the truth of God's Word. That is the truth of the Lord Jesus Christ and His life, His death, and His resurrection. There is no other truth. None, none other. So in this relative age, this age in which we see this pluralistic age in which we see all these others competing, we know that this is the truth. And the church is the pillar and support of this truth in the community. Can't beat it. Can't beat it. What an important point. How important it is for us as leadership of elders, deacons, and pastors to conduct ourselves in a way that shows that this is where people really do find the truth. And you know what? I, I think people are really hungering to hear that truth. I think people are really eager to know what really is true with all this stuff going on, all this plurality, all these other people claiming that they have it. They want to hear what the real truth is. And I think the Spirit is working and moving in people's lives. And if we hold this up on that pillar, and we're the kind of leadership that Paul is calling the, you know, Church in Ephesus to, if we see that in RB Community Church, many people will come and respond to the gospel. And then he ends with verse 16. By common confession. We all confess this. This is our confession, that, you know, truth. That truth is, is the confession, right? Great is the mystery. And when we see the word mystery, it's always, and when Paul's using it, Paul is always using it in what was at one time kind of hidden in the Old Testament. Yeah, it was prophesied about, but nobody fully could see. You know, that veil was in front of our eyes. We couldn't quite see. That comes in the New Testament to fruition in Christ. Now we can see clearly. That mystery has been revealed. And it's that godliness, you know, that we see in Christ Jesus. And then he sings an old hymn. It's wonderful. He sings this beautiful hymn, writes it down to Timothy, but well known to Timothy. I'm sure they were singing it in Ephesus. But it's poetic, beautifully poetic for us today, some of Paul's really excellent writing. He who was revealed in the flesh, was vindicated in the spirit, seen by angels, proclaimed among the nations,